Sure.
Okay, we will go ahead and call Ame the order. It is Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One and up. Okay, Brian? Okay. Any minutes and reports received and filed?
No, we do not.
Okay, Commissioner Committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events.
Oh, they got the Big Brothers Big Sisters Chili Cook-Off in Cornhole Wednesday night, Thursday Coal County Communities, Lincoln University groundbreaking for the Health and Security Sciences Institute, and Friday East Side Business Association, Saturday Lincoln University Homecoming Parade and Homecoming. That's about it. Oh yeah, Taylor Swift laser show Friday night.
Are you going?
No, you want tickets? I'm not gonna make it. I want to. Seriously, if mine wants a couple tickets, let me know.
Is Travis gonna be there?
Travis is where he got his tickets from?
He's busy right now.
I think they're having problems because he's not been playing very well.
Sure Gloria had Western Commissioner out.
You can't beat that.
No, I can't. Today, a Heartland Port meeting. Thursday, along with Coal County Communities is West Side Business Association. I think you've hit all the Lincoln University events. And Monday is St. Mary's Foundation Golf fundraiser.
And tomorrow, I gotta check, I'm supposed to have a J.C. Reps meeting, but I don't know if that's every, I don't know. Then our Lions Fall Supper is Wednesday night. And Thursday Communities, the OU Groundbreaking, I get to speak. Then we've got the Racks Walk a Mile on My Shoes at 6:00 P.M. at County Park, I believe.
I think that's been postponed.
Oh, has it?
Yes. I'll verify that for you.
Okay, okay, yeah, I just had that. Friday, there's a homecoming reception. Saturday parade, then a reception. Monday, there's an all-day FEMA disaster recovery training session over in Green County that Nick has invited us to. I don't think I'm gonna make it. So that's all I've got. Any commission comments? Okay. Bids and contracts, ELC ED expansion contracts.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I feel like this is like the Fourth or Fifth Amendment we've had for this contract. So this time, they're changing some language about how we have to submit reports, how we have to get prior approval. And they actually extended the contract for one month. It was supposed to end June 30th, 2025. Now it says July 31st, 2025. So minor changes, we are working through the prior approval process. And it's just more paperwork. But that's just the contract amendment for this time.
I'll make a motion to approve and sign the ELC-ED expansion contract amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of purchase of Osage Super Warrior ambulance.
Morning.
Good morning.
So our replacements schedule for apparatus calls for a delivery of a new ambulance in January. So with that lead time, production needs to start occurring here very shortly. So just asking for approval of the purchase of a Osage Super Warrior Type 1 on a 2025 chassis with the same specs as the, as we have been in the previous builds. This price is $292,619. And that's with the $15,000 trade-in of the old apparatus into that cost. So this would be out of the 2025 budget. And we would not take delivery until after the new year, but just want to get that approval so they can start working on it.
Is this, are we ordering?
It'll be.
We've got two of them coming next year.
It'll be.
So we're just ordering, this will be the first one for next year.
Yep, yep, so we're gonna take delivery of one in January and then middle of the year for the second.
That's the 24 one that we approved. Okay.
And the 15K trade-in, what's, what's the circa on that thing?
I believe that is a 2014 model.
Okay.
2015 model. But to my understanding, that is a remount. So that ambulance box is quite older. It might be have one or two cycles before that on that chassis.
I don't think we can remount them on their Type 1s anymore.
No, you cannot take a Type 3 to a Type 1.
I don't think you'd want to.
It would look pretty funny.
It would.
So I'm good with it.
You know, we do have some of our smaller ambulance districts, though, are having issues with their ambulance.
Yeah. So.
If one of the counties would wanna buy that.
Yeah, so what ends up happening to those trade-ins is they go in and they get cleaned up and either they remount them on a Type 3 and sell them as a remount or what they've been doing with our last few models is they've been service loaners. So Osage has been keeping them and loaning them out to agencies that have maintenance problems.
So you're kinda using the first in, first out FIFO method? The oldest one is the one that.
Correct.
Goes away.
Yep.
Got it. I'll make a motion to approve and move forward with the purchase of the Osage Super Warrior Type 1 ambulance for the amount of $292,619.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I just wanted to be noted that this is off of co-op, off of buy board co-op purchase, so.
Approval and signing of CPI maintenance.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, so this is actually, was discussed in previous commission meetings, but we have did a sole source on this and gotten it. We ran it and we're at the point now where we just need the contract signed for entering the agreement. So, let's see. So the contract is in the amount of $17,683.75. And it was with CPI Telecom. And it is for the maintenance of our existing phone system, county phone system. And I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Is that attached to our documents for today? Okay, I couldn't find it. Good, all right. Make a motion to approve and sign the CPI Telecom maintenance agreement for $17,683.75.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Bid award Bridge Hampton subdivision pavement replacement project number 2024-505-1.
So this contract will be with Concrete Solutions LLC. And bids were open Friday, September 27th, and they read low. Their price was $566,020. Engineer's estimate was $784,225. There were a total of eight bids. And it involves curb and gutter replacement and pavement repairs on Hunter's Run Road, Kingsbury Row, Hempstead Gate, Crossfield Glen Road, and Glenshire Way. And Public Works recommends awarding both the base bid and alternate one for this project. They are a new contractor for us as far as for Coal County goes. I did talk with the city, enabled several projects with the city and have been pleased with their work in the past, so.
That's a handful of savings. We use you as example with some of our other requirements. I would tell them I need to follow your lead.
That's right.
Matt, when will the neighbors out there see some action?
Once the contract is signed by you all and I get it to the contractor and get it signed, we will set up notice proceed and a pre-construction meeting. So we're looking at probably this fall through winter or so.
I'm good with it. I'm pleasantly surprised with where the bids came out. And they're, they're all over the place on it, so. Hungrier or they want to get their foot in door with us, so hopefully everything goes good with them.
I'll make a motion to sign the contract with, on the Bridge Hampton subdivision pavement replacement project number 2024-505-1 with Concrete Solution LLC.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Commissioners, one thing to add on this. We are not able to award or let the South Brooks Stormwater Project, so we moved this one up in its place. We're still hoping to have that one started next year sometime. And then also to note that we do have two other contracts in place for concrete repair on Golden Court and in the Pioneer Trail area also. So we're starting to make headways with our concrete streets also now. Just to let you all know.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Sir. Okay, approval and signing of summer food service program and at-risk after-school program participation.
Hello. So currently, we'll inspect these summer food sites during the summer, hence the name, for kiddos that come in and get lunch while they're expanding it to be all year long for after-school programs and like morning snacks, things like that. So a lot of the time, it's prepackaged food, it's not much of an inspection, but it's still good for us to follow up with those facilities. So instead of just a summer program, it will be all year long now. Did not change the amount of reimbursement. And then Debbie, the E-Verify is in there, so.
So we're not getting any more reimbursement on it, but we're doing more.
Theoretically, I think it's the same site. So when we're there checking for lunch, we'll also check with our after-school snack. And instead of just being packed into the summer months, it could be all year long.
So we're not making special trips there?
No, no.
Okay.
They're just giving them, and they actually provide the foods. So instead of just providing lunch, they're providing them after-school snacks too.
All righty, I guess.
I'll make a motion to sign the summer food service program and at-risk after-school program participation agreement with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. New business, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, assessors' office to present and admissions on property tax.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have here a list of 34 properties, new occupancies since July that we're gonna add to the 2024 tax bill. They're all prorated. There was one correction, a property was added back in June and need to be moved to the correct parcels. So we have a total of 34 properties being added to the tax bill this year.
You view it on them?
You can add that.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the errors and omissions on property tax as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay. Update on 308 High Street move. And it was suggested that we also insert discussion of furniture purchases, treasurer's offices, they're kind of the same.
I just know about the furniture. I don't know anything about really the update. But I've been working with Eric and Russell on getting a furniture list together. I think you guys should have it attached there. But I think you guys should have their list attached there. It's desks, chairs, the conference table, and some conference chairs. They've worked with Shrefer, Staples, and MBE. So we were kinda asking if we could get your blessing on an amount that they're able to spend. That way, we're not coming up here to buy Russell's desk and then Eric's desk and multiple chairs. That way, we can just keep it rolling with a certain amount. And I do have two quotes, one from Shrefer's and one from MBE, if you guys approve those purchases.
So bravely talked with Jessica about this. And I just thought kind of a arbitrary round number was $5,000 and a penny. $5,000 is what it's going, sorry, trying to save you there, Sheriff.
How about not to exceed?
Not to exceed $5,000, yeah.
Their estimate that they submitted was $5,138. Just FYI.
Oh, they don't get the cushioned headrests then, or electric windows. So is that both desks and chairs and?
Yeah, it's both desks, both chairs, as well as a conference table with four chairs for it and a side chair for the office as well.
Is that all stuff that needs to stay up there pretty much, Greg? We don't, it's just so much easier than having to move any of it, even the table and chairs?
Right, yeah.
Can I ask you a question, Russell? Where's that conference table going? We're moving it later, we're not moving it right away. I don't have a, a number to give you yet on what our needs are gonna be.
It's right in the middle of your office, Mark, isn't it?
And Eric was talking about either the common space or in his office to payment on space, but he hasn't made a final decision on that. But he wanted to talk with you about it, I'm sure.
Okay.
Are you all just gonna work through where the office is and meeting rooms and stuff are going? Or do we need to go and, or have you already talked about this?
They've, they've made their tour and kind of outlined who's going where and agreed between the two elected officials, right?
Yeah.
And staff, so.
I'm planning on moving in.
Okay.
We just haven't, I know, I did talk to Locke yesterday. He wants to keep all three desks that currently in our office. He's gonna put three people, so he's gonna move three people into the same space that we have three people. So say whatever, Greg's keen for having to move those big desks out of there across the street. I know we're gonna wanna purchase three, three desks to go over there. We should be able to move all our file cabinets. I don't think we're gonna need more filing, file cabinets. Chairs, I'm not sure, maybe some.
Side chairs.
Chairs to sit in, yeah, I'll put in my office for someone to visit or whatever.
Mark and I.
Something like that. But I have not done any, we have not made any specific plans yet.
He was gonna sit down and do a list as well to kinda get an estimate on how much they would need, their desks, their chairs, and stuff like that.
Well, the treasurer's office, we were wanting to expedite a little bit.
Yes.
Quicker, so that's fine.
Yeah, we have time.
Yeah, we're not moving till November.
As long as you all agree on where stuff is going, I think, was what I was just questioning. If you all already addressed that, it sounds like they did, so.
Yeah.
And you didn't have a proposal, we were just, when we were talking, I was just throwing the number out there, $5,000, so.
Yeah, when we talked. And then they got their list together and got quotes.
Did you see this? You got a copy?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I, I do have a question for IT. The IT piece of this move, is it progressing as scheduled?
Yeah, it's not gonna happen on that day. So I can, I can do like, create a temporary work environment for them. But I can't get right speed to move as fast as we need them to move. I just got notification today that the order is being processed and things like that. And I might be able to pull a rabbit out of a hat with them on that one, but.
They will be operational, though?
They will.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll make sure they're operational.
The keys have been distributed to the players over there, right?
They have, yes.
Okay. Officially, the lease begins today.
Oh, good.
So Debbie's got that worked out in terms of that, that, we're gonna get that in this AP today?
I can't, I'm just waiting to have the contract, but I can.
I've got it.
You got it?
Yeah.
We'll get it in.
Uh, yeah.
Yep, we'll get it out.
Can I get, can I get key access to that, please?
Yeah, I'll figure out.
Just temporary?
Yep.
Did you, on another subject, well, same subject, different version? Parking, are they going to have spots in the lot behind there then?
What I was told, we have one spot and for one of the elected officials, so we make room for the judge in one. And Mark has been willing to give up his spot, so he's going behind the building, we have that tag.
Okay, so are we getting spots behind the building then?
One.
I thought you just said two. Just one?
One.
You said Mark's giving up his spot? And we're getting one spot there?
Well, he's giving his up here, they're moving over.
So is Eric parking back there or Russell parking back there at all? They're staying in their spots here?
They're staying in their spots.
Okay. Because I need to know what's going on in that or else I will pass the parking file to anyone else that wants to take care of it.
Well, this provides a space.
I'm not saying it's over yet, but.
This provides a space for our new judge.
Yeah, but he also has a, he's gonna have a clerk, a marshal, and so that helps with one space. We're also losing one space back here because of the HVAC upgrades that we're making, so. And the public defenders do know that we're taking their spot and talk to them. I just hope I don't get in trouble and need a public defender, so.
Oh, you could still get one, but you might not get it.
He's guilty, Judge. So, okay, I'll get with you after that then. And that does help one spot.
Yeah, I'm surprised they're not gonna want more. Like I said, we got court, they'll need a court reporter, an extra marshal.
I don't think the associate gets a court reporter.
The extra position created was circuit judge, so. Has he already got his?
Yeah, well, that's already been, I mean, this, this is simply somebody moving into Judge Limbaugh's old.
So the new court reporter already has a parking spot.
I, I'm not saying that, but.
It seems like they're gonna need more spots.
Well, that judge, that judge is already there with that person, so I guess they've settled somewhere. Okay.
Okay.
No other things that we have to, we have another?
Did we approve the 5183?
No, no. And I have two quotes, if you guys can.
I just wanted to see how long you sat there and listened to us.
You're gonna have to manage your not to exceed.
Yes. I don't even know if I made that a motion a while ago.
No.
No, no.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the furniture purchase for $5,138.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thirty-eight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Approval and signing of change order number two for the data room and classroom expansion of the law enforcement center.
Technically, for Little Dixie, you guys approved change order number one. This is change order number two, even though there may be some minutes of a change order number two. It was in combination with this one. And they do work change orders, but they actually call these change orders. So I call them, there's a list of different things that add up to this change order. And it is a deduction of $2,489.30. He did have an allowance out there for $20,000 for changes. So between the $20,000 and the one and two, you're another $9,000 over the 20, but. But this one is a deduction, sorry. You got all that. You agree, Sheriff?
I have no idea what you're guessing.
For sure.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to accept change order number two on the Coal County Law Enforcement Contract.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Debbie, do you need anything from me on that? PO?
We'll change the PO, if that's okay with you.
Oh, that's fine.
Okay.
Unless I gotta do.
Okay, router upgrade.
I would ask that we put the router upgrade, the Hubert Associate Server move, the Meyer Electric Server rack purchase, table it for it later. Something's come up.
Table all three of those?
All three of them.
Okay, we'll do that. Interview room camera system, RFP.
Yes, Brian?
So we've got, we've got the RFP ready. We're just letting purchasing finish putting on the Ts and Cs on it and things like that. So I don't really have anything to get approved today, but we'll have that ready for next, next commission meeting.
Oh, wow. Why do we need to put it on for next week?
I don't know, I'm way outside of my, my plane here, so.
Can you, can we, can we just go ahead and approve the RFP to put the RFP out? And then once you have it completed, put it out?
Yeah.
Yeah, we would ask that you approve us to be able to put the RFP out. And then whenever we've completed it and it's practically done, I have no idea, I'm making that part up. But anyway, as soon as it is done, we'd be able to put that in the paper.
Is that correct?
No, I don't know. Okay.
You have me all confused.
Yeah.
Was it in the existing budget for this year or no?
Well, there, right now, we don't have an operational camera system. Well, it's sort of operational, so. Depends on how you hold your mouth.
You got any idea what it is gonna cost? Did we, I don't remember, we talked about, I know you talked about this issue before and that it was.
And it's not just the upstairs.
Not even substandard.
It's not just the upstairs detective interview rooms, it's also the video interview rooms.
Ouch.
And really, we won't have the price until our.
Okay. Do we even need to have an approval to get the RFP out or just?
Just be aware that that's a transfer.
When you come to us with the bids then? Okay.
Just your blessing to go forward is what we need for most.
Yeah. And kinda, kinda follow Public Works' lead and come in cheap.
Well, they commend under the estimate, they haven't even given us an estimate, so.
We're. It'll be less than, it'll be less than a million dollars. But you have to remember, we're a lot more complicated than what Public Works is.
You are, Captain.
Oh, my goodness.
Not only professionally.
That was pitched up in the air there. So you're saying you wanna go see Taylor Swift Friday?
I'm really busy today.
So I don't, we've never really made motions to go ahead with the RFP, just okay. So if it's too much, we can just reject them and Sheriff's gonna have to stand there with a video camera. Okay?
Yes, we're doing it, okay.
Do that now.
And we did the discussion of furniture purchases. So we will go to unfinished business. AED upgrade discussion.
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
So I finally have some, some solid numbers for you all. Thank you, Jess, for getting me connected with the right folks. But it looks like if, if we go with the state contract in total with the, the cabinets, and they gave me a quote for 14 cabinets, we don't need 14, we only need six. So that would be $27,662.76. But if we look at, the sheriff gave us a website, a setting, and their cabinets, that would reduce the cost by a couple hundred bucks to $27,228. And then I have those quotes.
That's the cabinets and the machines themselves, right?
Yeah, this, this is incorrect because it. Yeah, this, this is incorrect, because it, they put fourteen cabinets on here, and we don't need fourteen, because we already have some existing cabinets. We will need an extra one for Public Works, we'll need three for the courthouse, we'll need an extra one of this building, and then an extra one in Pringle.
And how many new units next?
Fourteen.
And they're all, it's all that matches EMS.
That's correct. And then there is, and I didn't get prices on this, but there is a buyback program, so we can take our old units and send it to them, and they will give us a discount on that.
Do we know how much?
I don't know, I don't know. I doubt it's much, because those are very old units.
At the end of the day, we're going to have fourteen defibrillators working, they're going to be the same model. This is that, what's it called?
Zole.
Zole.
Yes.
And do we plan a little bit of training on this thing, and some of us may have had training and forgotten what to do? Is that in the plan?
We can certainly do that. I know often the health department has training and people who train, and then also the ambulance has folks who can do that as well, so we can certainly open that up.
Yeah, I want, I want, I want training.
Perfect. And it's about time to get everyone recertified for CPR as well.
Is this the, kind of the industry standard, this manufacturer doing this?
They're a highly reputable manufacturer. I've heard of them for a long time.
I mean, so the chances are that our folks who know how to operate this one might find themselves in another building in another state and know how to operate it there.
That's correct.
Okay.
You know, AEDs operate very similarly across the board.
All right.
So we had a, what was the price, twenty-seven?
Two, twenty-eight.
Yes, twenty-seven, two, twenty-eight, if you want to go with the option of ordering the cabinets from someone else.
It's fourteen units, six cabinets, right?
Yes.
Okay. And then hopefully we get some trade in, it's less.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we kind of approved this, what, last week, except for we didn't have final numbers, so.
Right.
It was around that same thing.
Can I help you on that, have the marijuana?
Yes.
Okay.
So I'm good with this.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the AED upgrade as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any agrees to?
Well, I think we need to maybe cycle back to NavHoltz. Curtis, is that right? Do we?
Yes.
Okay, it's not on here, but it, we did talk about it last week, didn't we? We tabled it from last week.
Yeah, and so we received from Mitchell, we received from Mitchell late Friday a revised contract, so I sent that in Monday morning, and so really, it's that agreement to, basically based on the fees that we've talked about, that contract, which is the A-one-three-three agreement, which is the main agreement for the construction manager at risk, and then there's this supplemental contract that goes with that about general conditions, which is the B, I forget the number for it, but it's the pairing of those two contracts to be approved. And then once later on, when a defined grand maximum price is identified at the end of construction documents and design, that would be amended to, before construction would go forward, or, because you guys would have to approve that. So right now, we're just approving to basically engage officially the construction manager.
Okay, all three of us attended that meeting last Friday, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, I was pulling up the contract.
I have it, if you need it.
I got it pulled up off the email, I didn't know if this was under closed session or old business, unfinished business, and so, okay.
Ready to go? I'll try this, I'll make a motion to sign the AIA document A-one-three-three dash twenty-nineteen for the juvenile, I'm sorry, let's go this way, with NavHoltz Construction as the construction manager at risk on the juvenile facility.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. I would say, do we have anything else?
I just want to throw something out there for, I think Nick sent this to us, too, for the Independent Living Resource Center, they've got a fundraiser going on. Donuts, Krispy Kreme donuts by the dozens, until October fourth, they'll be taking orders, and pickup will be at seventeen sixty South Ridge Drive on Friday, October eleventh, so if you're interested, you can get all the, Nick or myself even, I can get you the information for it, and it's a good thing they're doing, too, with some ramps, they've been getting some United Way money for that, for a lot of these people that are lower income or have people with some special needs and helping them out, so buy some donuts and for a good cause.
Okay.
Anything else? That's me.
So we do have, I mentioned flu shot clinics, your nurses are going into the schools, we do have some clinics scheduled for the county employees, but we have a drive-through clinic this Thursday, the third, from twelve to six, it's open to anyone insured or uninsured who come through. We have, you know, vaccine available if you're uninsured through the Vaccines for Children Program or three-one-seven, or if you're insured, we'll run your insurance, don't even have to get out of your car, we'll give you the shot right while you sit in your car. So twelve to six this Thursday. And we do have some COVID vaccines available, depending on insurance status, but this is mainly just a flu shot clinic.
Thank you.
Yeah, just one thing, so I recently had the opportunity to use the health clinic for, for illness purpose, and that was ran very well out there. I was, had a real bad respiratory thing going on, and they got me back on the mend very quickly, it was very efficient. Michelle's a really good resource out there, and I think, I really recommend that people get to use it or try to use it, because it really is very fast and very efficient, so.
Well, it's good for our employees, it's also their spouse, families can use it, too, so this is really a benefit to everyone.
Yeah, I think it's good to have a reminder out there once in a while that the service is available for our employees and their families, right?
Yeah, and their families.
So, yep, we're very good, appreciate it. So we need people to get sick and go use it.
As we're going to follow well, well, that.
Sorry, Debbie, I won't be coughing around here.
Yeah.
I was just teasing.
Do we have anything else before we go to closed session?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'll make, pursuant to section six-ten point zero-two-one of the revised statutes
of Missouri, the commission will go into closed session to discuss the following bids and contracts under section six-ten point zero-two-one subsection twelve, existing or proposed security systems under six-ten point zero-two-one subsection twenty.
Second.
We're all called, please.
Sam?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay.